Good morning, everybody. I'm just gonna take care of something because this show is actually playing in the background in another camera. Hey, everybody, welcome to the snowstorm now coming to you daily at 10:00 AM Pacific. It is Saturday, August 2nd, 2025. I am your host Nicholas Snow. And you know, I'm excited to report that after a decade-long effort in June of 2025, Palm Springs City Council approved a license agreement with Palm Springs Pride for the construction, installation, maintenance, and operation of a landmark flagpole in the Arenas District. This significant decision paves the way for a powerful symbol of hope, freedom, and equality in the heart of Palm Springs. My co-host today is Mitch Battersby, who's volunteer coordinator with Palm Springs Pride. He's gonna let us in the community know how we can support this historic effort. And you, of course, know Mitch from his hit online show, Neighbors Cooking. You gotta love his ongoing show, and we'll get him to talk about that as well. And I am the producer and the host of this show, and my computer is doing weird things that I don't understand right now. So with that, this is a viewer-supported program, and I rely on important people to make this happen. And I've got to take care of something. This is just very strange, so bear with me. Okay. Thank you for that. So this is a viewer-supported program, and I thank my patrons at the back of the show. But people who help promote the program for it, as I help pledge to support the program for as little as $10 a month, are thanked at the end of the show, but I want to thank them right now as well. So everyone who pledges $10 a month gets added to the closing credit sequence. And my most recent supporter, who actually came on at a higher level, is our good friend Vincent Corrales, also known as DJ Galaxy. And people that donate $3 a month, they don't show up in the closing credits, but I do give them a shout out on the show. And I want to welcome those recent supporters, Doug Sedownik, Robert Tice, and Sharon Segal. And people who give at that level end up receiving this really nice sticker in the mail at some point. So I want to thank everybody for that. Coming up at the beginning of every show, I have a what's on your mind sequence. And as I start going live every day at 10:00 AM, hopefully more and more people will tune in for this interactive portion at the beginning of the show where we talk about what's on your mind. So I want to encourage you to comment live if you're watching now in your social media, and let me know what's on your mind. And with that, I'll be back with co-host Mitch Battersby. We're gonna find out what's on his mind and learn more about this historic flagpole project for the Arenas District in Palm Springs. I'm Nicholas Snow, and I'd like to thank Willie Ryan and John Pascal, owners of 849 Restaurant and Lounge, for their support of Promo Homo TV from the beginning. I was honored to work at the restaurant the first four years they were open, during which time I was inspired to write this. At 849 Restaurant and Lounge, sitting in the lounge area at a high top with a view of the grand corridor, the main dining area, is truly like starring in one play while simultaneously watching another, both with fabulous scenery and lighting, a gorgeous cast, fascinating characters, and exciting plot twists, complete with movie stars and paparazzi, not to mention fabulous eats. I call it reality dinner theater. See and be seen while starring in your own scene. Perhaps we'll have a scene together. Make your reservations at 849.com.
Hi, it's Brad Fur, a proud media sponsor of Promo Homo TV, and I'm the owner of Kgay Palm Springs and Gay Desert Guide. We just wanted to say thank you and thanks to Nicholas Snow for what he does. Kgay Radio is a worldwide streaming service of great dance hits that you can listen to anywhere, anytime. And when you're planning your visit to Greater Palm Springs, use gaydesertguide.lgbt.
Ask your smart speaker to play KGAY.
Hi, my name is Matt Scalerud, president of Pink Media, and a very proud and long-term supporter of Promo Homo TV. And so at Pink Media, we've been working with companies, large and small, including destinations such as this, to kind of help them target and reach the LGBT community online. And so we've been doing this for almost 30 years. And what's more important is that, you know, it started out with banner ads and email campaigns, and now we've morphed into social media and video. And it's hard, it's all about storytelling. So if you have a story and a message that you'd like to get out to a very targeted yet broad audience online, reaching the LGBT community, give us a call or reach us at www.pinkmedia.lgbt. Thanks.
The LGBTQ community center of the desert is the only Coachella Valley organization dedicated to meeting the diverse needs of all LGBTQ+ individuals. From our Palm Springs McDonald Wright Building to the Center of Coachella, the Skahins Behavioral Health Clinic, and the Community Food Bank, our mission comes to life by making meaningful connections to resources and to community that contribute to LGBTQ+ people's health and happiness. For more information, visit thecentercv.org.
And just like that, the Sex in the City universe is coming to an end with the cancellation of the resurrected series after its third season. That's one of the things that's on my mind. What's on your mind? I'll be back with co-host Mitch Battersby to discuss what's on your mind. Hey, Mitch, how are you today?
Good morning, Nicholas. How are you?
I'm fantastic. Welcome to the show. Congratulations on your long-running online series, Neighbors Cooking. You know, I admire you. It takes a lot to produce a regular show, especially a cooking show with lots of, lots of technical requirements and things going on all at once.
You know, I am so fortunate to be doing my show. It's come as a labor of love. I love food. I love cooking. I love sharing healthy ways to eat with people. And most of all, I have found that it's become a platform for me to bring community leaders on from all over our community, not just the LGBTQ+ community, but from other nonprofits and people in our valley that do good things for our community, helping kids, troubled teens, art programs, after-school programs, the Boys and Girls Club, all of these people that come on. And of course, I have city leaders and others that come on the show and talk about what they're doing. But it's such an honor for me not to only get to spend some time with these people in the kitchen, because that's where so many people communicate and share their truths is in the kitchen. And, and at the same time, getting to cook, you know, a meal that we get done in 30 minutes, live, on air, mistakes and all, even though people don't know we necessarily made a mistake. And it's a lot of fun. It's, 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 it's been a blessing for me. We're in our fifth year now.
Well, congratulations. I've been producing Promo Homo TV in one form or another for about eight or nine years.
It's a lot of work. I've got a camera guy and a lighting and an editor guy and a sound person. And it's because it's gone much further than the first show where it was just my cellphone.
Well, congratulations on that. So what's on your mind, Mitch?
You know, I think, you know, since we're talking about shows and what shows do, which create visibility for me, what's on my mind is the amazing bravery of our community in Hungary during this last Pride. You know, Budapest or Hungary passed a law saying that they couldn't have Pride. And yet, even with that law weighing down on all of those people in that country, they have the largest outpouring of community members and allies, up to 300,000 people that just filled the streets of Budapest without fear of the government repercussion, because anybody caught celebrating could be charged 500 euros, which I think is about $1,000. So every single person was subject to a $1,000 fine and/or imprisonment just for going out and waving their flags and saying, we're here. So visibility, I think, makes me, it makes me, it's an honor to see people say, hey, we're, we're still gonna be visible. You're not gonna stop us. You're not gonna make up weird rules like in Hungary where they said it was part of their Child Protection Act to stop children from seeing anything LGBTQ-related. And the community and people from all around Hungary came into the country and said, nope, we're gonna do this. And it was an impressive, an impressive display of strength and power and, and community. So that's what's on my mind.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that more serious topic. Amsterdam Pride is happening today, and a lot of people we know and love happen to be there. I'll have to be there one year. So I was a, I was a fan of Sex in the City when it came out on HBO. And I, I was really excited when, and Just Like That came back. I really wanted to be into it. And I, I am not surprised that this, the series is ending after this current season. It's interesting, the writers and creatives could have taken it in so many different directions. I appreciate the artistry that goes into it. I will watch every episode until the end, but it is sort of the end of an era.
Well, you know, sometimes a show just needs to close its doors when it closes its doors. Sometimes when you come back to make a remake or to, to, to reengage an audience with, with the same show, people have, people have an expectation of it being what it was. And that's not always a case in a remake and a reboot. And, you know, and, and the premise of the show, the first series was, you know, a bunch of young women looking for their past and finding their strengths and, and declaring their independence to be who they are. And I think that was important, an important message for those young women. But now those young women are as old as you and me. They, they should have found that independence by now and that. And so I didn't watch the reboot. I typically don't watch reboots unless somebody really, you know, says, oh, that's something you should watch. It's really amazing. It's just as good as the other one. But, you know, so I'm glad you enjoyed it. I actually didn't ever watch it, the second one. I did watch the first one religiously.
Okay, so I know, I know we have a lot of live viewers. They did not participate in our what's on your mind segment. So for next time, anyone watching live, at the beginning of the show, I encourage you to type into your social media, your question, your comment, your breaking news, your gossip, anything that's on your mind, because I want to spotlight you. And as this show evolves, my daily show, I want to incorporate a regularly recurring panel of four to five people who come on and talk about everything that's going on in the world. I love that format, and I like to hear a lot of different perspectives. Hey, Mitch, are you a hopeful sexual?
I am a hopeful sexual. Haven't had a date in 10 years.
Okay, well, with that, I'm gonna take a break, and I'll be back with Mitch Battersby after this. This particular shirt is the crux of the Hopeful Sexual campaign, and it is designed to inspire authentic human connection while simultaneously combating sexuality-based shame and stigma. And the really cool thing is, if you go to hopefulsexual.com, it takes you to an Amazon store where this shirt is available in all sorts of styles, sizes, and colors. And I use the revenue to fund promohomo.tv. So check it out. I think everyone, almost everyone is a hopeful sexual, don't you? I'm Nicholas Snow with my co-host Mitch Battersby. We're gonna talk about what's hot in Palm Springs, and I want to say hello to Jazelle Wallace, who is watching. You gotta love that. I certainly do. What's hot in Palm Springs? And you're looking at what's hot in Palm Springs. After a decade-long effort in June 2025, Palm Springs City Council approved a license agreement with Palm Springs Pride for the construction, installation, maintenance, and operation of a landmark flagpole in the Arenas District. This significant decision paves the way for a powerful symbol of hope, freedom, and equality in the heart of Palm Springs. And joining the show today is Mitch Battersby, as my special co-host. And Mitch, you are championing on behalf of Palm Springs Pride, the fundraising effort, so members of our community can come together and raise $50,000. And I know that this has been like at least a decade in the making.
It has been, Nicholas. It's been a decade in the making, and I have to right off the back give a lot of kudos to our CEO and, and current mayor, Rhonda Hart. He has been the champion behind this project and has done all of the legwork to get it up to the point where we finally got it into city council and got it approved. And I was fortunate to get to go speak on that vote the day it happened and give my two cents on behalf of Palm Springs Pride. And I was, you know, just so excited that we got it approved. It's a big deal.
Well, it is. And, you know, just to provide more information, as you know, Mitch, the Arenas District Flagpole Project will feature a prominent installation of the Gilbert Baker-designed Pride Flag, considered the most significant piece of LGBTQ+ art. It was created by Baker, who lived from June 2nd, 1951, to March 31st, 2017. And his version of the flag commemorates the black, white, Latino, Asian, and native-born activist who tirelessly fought for the LGBTQ+ equality since the flag was first flown in San Francisco in 1978. And at the top of the show, I actually did show a glimpse of that flag flying in the Castro district. And you know what? I think I'm gonna play it again right now. I remember as a young gay person traveling to San Francisco for the first time, and even to LA, actually, for the first time, to a larger community than the one I grew up in, how powerful it was to see a rainbow flag anywhere, let alone towering above the middle of downtown.
Right. Well, you know, we're incredibly proud to be installing the new Pride Flag Pole in the Hartley Arenas District. It's right in downtown Palm Springs, like the Castro, like the one in Hillcrest in San Diego. But for us, it's really more than just a flagpole. It's, it's a visible and lasting tribute to the contributions of the LGBT community right here in Palm Springs, to the city of Palm Springs. And we're proud it will stand as a symbol of unity and pride, and not just during the festival. It's going to be up year-round, because we know Pride isn't seasonal, and we know equality is not temporary. So it will be an amazing piece of art and symbolism for our community, and will serve as a gathering space, a place where people know they can bring their families and friends and allies and, and celebrate their identity and their culture and community. It's, it's, it's really about creating a space where people feel seen, valued, and connected.
I have just posted into the comments the donate link. That's a bit.ly shortcut. And when I click on it over in another window here on my screen, it takes me to Greater Palm Springs Pride, and it's actually a fundraising platform. So, and you've raised, as of this broadcast at this moment in time, and it's 10:21 AM on August 2nd, 2025, you've raised $1,875 of the $50,000 goal. So explain to me the costs involved in bringing the project to fruition, and then, of course, the maintenance of the project.
So Palm Springs Pride will spend up to, will be spending up to $75,000 to install the flagpole to, and then we will have a regular maintenance, insurance. This is the responsibility of Palm Springs Pride. So the city is, the Economic Development Department from the city is putting in $34,000, I believe is the number, towards it, because it will be an economic driver. It will be, you know, something that even for international people from around the world, when they come and they can look up and see where the Arenas District is based on that huge flagpole and our flag, they'll know that they can find a safe place to come and celebrate themselves and their identity and, and have a good time and, and experience the spirit of Palm Springs. So we will have regular maintenance costs. We will replace the flag every three months so that there's not discoloration happening. We want to honor the Baker flag and see that it's always shiny in its brightest colors. That will cost us $1,800 every three months to replace the flag. And then it's just regular maintenance, keeping it, keeping it in order. The land around, the landscaping and the benches and the other things that are happening on the spot will be maintained by the city.
Okay, so I'm bringing up to the screen right now, this is pspride.org as it looks right now.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of things happening. Of course, we have the major festival coming up, November 6th through 9th, the inaugural Palm Springs Equality Walk on October 25th, and of course, there's the giant rendition of the flag. And, but what I'm curious to know is, if people click at the donate on the top of this page, it takes them here, this is a general donation to Palm Springs, Palm Springs Pride. Can people use this page to donate to the flag project?
They, it can. So that is just a general donation. If you click, if you go back a page, you'll see below the Pride Be Heard, you'll see a thing that's keep going right there. You'll see the, it should say, well, on mine, it says...
Oh, okay. I just clicked it. Okay, that's good. That's the information I was looking for.
Yeah, so it does say on the page that I see the Arenas District Flagpole Project. So if you just click on that, it'll take you to our fundraising page that is specific to the flag project.
All right. So for our viewers, I'm going to pspride.org. That's what I've typed in. I'm scrolling down until I see this picture. I don't see the head, I don't see a headline, but I'm seeing this picture. And when I click on it, then there's the page where you can donate specifically to this project. It's all visible from pspride.org. So a lot of people, Mitch, are familiar with the Arenas Road area. And this is going to be at the Indian Canyon end of the road?
Yeah, so it'll be in the corner of where, Quad, is it Quad's, Chobar, Chobar? It'll be in the corner parking lot, on the corner of Arenas and Indian Canyon.
Indian Canyon. And that's the southeast corner.
Correct. It will be a 65-foot flagpole with a 25-by-50-foot flag, which is larger than the Hillcrest flag, for those viewers that are familiar with the Hillcrest flag. And I believe it's the same size as the San Francisco flag.
Well, I'm so excited. And is there a date that has been selected for the official flag raising?
Currently, our plan is for October 20th to do the official flag raising right before the Equality Walk. And that will be the first, the first time it will be raised, and then it will consistently be raised throughout the year. There will be times when possibly, well, not possibly, for things like Memorial Day, Veterans Day, national holidays, we will raise the American flag and the California flag on it. And there'll be opportunities for other community members, like the transgender community, when they have their pride to request to have a similar flag that they can provide to us. So they would have to order the same-sized flag, and we will put that flag up during like transgender pride. So for the rest of the year, it will be, we're also doing the bisexual community, and I think it was the leather community also. So they can make a request to have the flag up for a day or a weekend, depending on what their event is. And we will honor that request so long as they provide us with a flag that's the same size to go up the pole.
Fantastic. So I put on the screen, people can donate at pspride.org, scroll down and click on the picture of the large rainbow flag, and click for the donate, donation page specific to this project. Now, are there any ways that you'll be able to acknowledge any major donors to this project?
Yes, we're currently working on what the fundraising scenario looks like. We are working with the merchants, of course, on Arenas to try and do some marketing right in each of the restaurants and retail establishments, with like a play card that says, you know, help raise the flag. We're working with Dean from Black Book on that. And then we are looking at a plaque that will be, a naming plaque that will be at the base of the flagpole. We haven't had that designed yet. We don't know how many spaces will be available on it, but we will have a major donors opportunity for, you know, our larger donors to be able to have some naming rights on that plaque.
Okay, Mitch, is there anything else you want to add?
Um, you know, just, I, I want to just make sure that our community members know they're invited to be part of this. This is a historic project. It is, it, every contribution's gonna help us raise that flag higher, not just physically, but symbolically. It, it represents love, inclusion, and the enduring spirit of pride in our community. We have the opportunity to say Pride is here. It's not going anywhere. It's permanent. And we want to support that. So any contribution, $5, $10, $25, one-time donation, monthly donations, whatever people can afford, to know that they will be part of a historic flag. And every time they drive by it, every time they see their friends and show it, they can point to it and say, I helped get that flag up. And I think that is significant in, in and of itself. It's not about the dollar amount. It's about supporting our community and making sure that we show that we have a place, you know, because Arenas has been historically are the place where we've come together to march and to protest and to mourn and to love each- and to protest and to mourn and to love each other unapologetically and as our true authentic selves. So this landmark flagpole is making that statement that our city believes in us and supports us, that our community knows they have a safe place, and that so many here and from around the world can make a contribution to make that statement.
Well, I'm feeling joy for a variety of reasons, but the sense of community we have here in the desert is one of those reasons. And getting to know people like you and, you know, participating, and also being back to doing what I love with this show, lots of reasons to be joyful and happy. And I just commend you and the Pride Organization for all of your work. And I'm grateful to be a media partner with Palm Springs Pride and the official broadcaster of the Pride Parade. You know, Mitch, this year, I'm, I'm upping the quotient once again. It will be a four-camera broadcast on YouTube, on the official Promo Homo TV channel. We will be hardwired into the internet, so we're not relying on mobile data, which can cause for a diminished broadcast. And I'm just really looking forward to that.
You know, you have done such a great job in developing that parade coverage. And last year's was great. You really upped the game last year. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we do this year.
Well, same here. And you'll have to come on the show regularly, because I'm going to be here every day, and I need people to join me. And by the way, we have a lot of live viewers now. So I want to remind all of the live viewers to go to YouTube. Actually, I'm going to put this, this on the screen for you, since they're, it's at the end of the show and they're watching. So really, the best way to always know when I'm on is to go to youtube.com/promohomotvnetwork, like and subscribe. But you also need to do turn on notifications, because when you turn on notifications, when I go live, you'll be notified. And also, if you want to find out how to pitch guests for the show, if you go to Promo Homo TV, which I'm doing right now, in the main menu is pitching guests. There's this pitching guest in the dropdown menu. And if you drop down, it clicks over to how to pitch guests and story ideas. So with that, Mitch, I think we can call it a show.
Well, Nicholas, thank you so much for allowing us to come on and share about the flagpole and thoughts. And we value you here in the valley, so appreciate all the hard work you do.
Thank you, and I will see you soon.
We will.
I don't have a, I don't, at the, at the end of my broadcast, I don't have a meal to serve. I'm sorry. But I know that you do at the end of Neighbor's Cooking.
Well, when you come on the show, I, you will have a meal that you get to try, that you get to help cook. So we got to get you scheduled soon.
Okay, I look forward to that. And thanks, everybody, for watching. And I'll see you tomorrow.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Oops, it's saying, oh, here we go. Bye.
Hmm.